Okay, we're going to get started. Work session is September 15, 2022. Could you please call the roll? Mrs. Logan.
Mr. Kleinfelter.
President.
Mr. Chanel.
Here.
Mrs. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Van Winkle.
Here.
Mrs. Hayes will be a little bit late. Okay, with that being said, I'll turn the floor over to you, Dr. Conkle.
Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to say the state report card was released today, and our results are phenomenal once again. We did very, very well academically. I know that Mr. Richards and Mrs. Wright will dig into the report card data. Hopefully, soon, near school board meeting, we'll dig into those results. But our teachers, our parents, our students did a heck of a job academically with our state report card. So I think Mr. Martin said preliminarily, we are the highest high school in Butler County once again, graduation rate, which is awesome. And again, just that got released today. Do not have time today to dig into that, but we will present that here soon. So next item, I want to just go over your packet that you have in front of you.
As you're doing that, so, yeah, so for the people in the crowd, the work session will be kind of handled this way. There's, there's forms up here you can look at. This information is going to be given to the board tonight, and then we're going to allow, depending on the time, at least a minimum of 10 minutes. So if you have notes that you want to make throughout, at the very end, you can ask questions. But we won't be interacting with the crowd at this point with the information tonight. But at the end, if you have questions, we will for sure answer those questions.
Thank you. So just to go over your packet, you have the agenda in your packet. You also have a copy of the PowerPoint for your review. There's also a copy of the Burns Farm Development Statement that Mr. Kleinfelter will read later. And obviously, there is a revised agenda. Also, if you're in the audience, there are handouts there if you would like to, like to follow along with us. So with that being said, we do have the agenda for work session. We want to get into the levy in August to go over some of those details. The second item is we have a snapshot of the tenure history in our district. That is a very detailed document. It's kind of overwhelming at this point, but our goal is to get that information out. And then our Friday FAQs, we will take a topic and just kind of present that to the public. So tonight, it's more of an overview. There's a lot of information. We get that. We also think it's also relevant, too. The third item, we will do a statement. Mr. Kleinfelter will read a statement on the Burns property. And then finally, we'll look into the state oversight and kind of what that looks like. So that being said, I want to discuss the levy in August. I'm not going to read this to you, but this will be available eventually on our website. But I think the most compelling thing with this data is the turnout in the county was about 8.4%, but the turnout in our school district was about 37%. So that was probably the, the most telling information on that slide. You can see the percentage for and against, but that is obviously very telling information. Obviously, this is very hard to read, but you do have that handout in front of you. These are the 18 precincts here in Ross. And one, one of the precincts, Ross Three, was the only precinct that voted, was in favor of the actual levy. The other 17, again, I'm not going to read these numbers to you, of voted not to accept the levy. So again, 18 precincts, one voted yes, and the others were a no vote. Next slide is parents. I think this is also an interesting slide. Of our 3,035 parents that are registered voters, we had 1,341 that actually voted. So if you divide that out, that's about a 44% turnout from our parents. Overall, that's slightly higher than the actual 36%, but also, if you can look at the next bullet, if you compare that to November 2020, that's the Biden-Trump election, that turnout was 81%. So you can see that comparison, 44% compared to about 81%. Our strategy was the mine plus nine strategy. That obviously was not successful for us. You can see 884 parents voted without a captain. A captain is somebody that we identified with our levy committee, and the captain's goal was to go out and recruit people that were in support of the levy. So the actual strategy was not successful, obviously, but the 884 parents did not have a captain assigned to them. So that just tells us that the strategy that we used was not very successful. And obviously, the 457 parents were connected to captains. Community turnout, this is, these are not our parents. These are recently graduated alumni, and these are pre-parents. Very interesting slide, slide here. This is the highest turnout from this group ever, even higher than the 2020 presidential election. There are 1,400 new voters that did not vote in the last school levy, which was, which was May of 19. So 1,400 people that did not vote in May of 19, and they came out and voted in August. And at the very end, this is quite interesting, we believe there, well, there are 2,200 newly announced Republicans that have voted this year in the August ballot. So people that were either independent and chose to go Republican, or they were Democrats and chose to go Republican. So 14, I'm sorry, 2,200 new declared Republicans that voted in August. We believe that is a stepping stone into the November election that's coming up. Again, we analyze these, these data points. I think it's good to just kind of have these conversations. Obviously, they are very factual. I just wanted to present this to you so you could see this. Any questions on the actual voter data? Board members, anything?
Mr. Kleinfelter, do you have a question?
Well, yes. Out of the captains, like, I don't think I had any parents in my captain group. Mine were all older people. So do we know what percentage of people with captains did vote? Like, how many were selected by captains, and what percent votes?
I do not know that offhand. We had 5,400 identified people on our list, and each captain was responsible for X number of people, but I do not know that exact percentage. And we can find it out.
All right.
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah.
Mr. Chanel.
Welcome.
All right, let's get into, you have anything, Mr. Van Winkle?
Yep.
Okay, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'm sorry. So let's get into the handout, and obviously, this is two.
The handout is the big one?
Yes, correct. It's.
Legal paper. Yeah.
Yeah. We have copies here if you need them. Too big to fit on the PowerPoint. I think Mr. Chanel is going to jump in here, and Mrs. Logan, and also Mr. Castater, so four jurors.
So I'll start by saying that I put this together recently with the help of Mr. Fraser, Mr. Logan, Mr. Castater, Dr. Conkle. It's kind of my purview of how I've seen things over the last 10 years. So there's comments or opinions in here. It's mine, not necessarily everybody else's. But thought it'd be good to try to show a lot of, we've told a lot of stories. I say stories, but I meant probably not the right word. But there's a lot of things that have led to where we are. But I felt like this would be a good way to try to bring, bring all that together and show it in, in one document. It's a ton of numbers. It's a lot of words. It's a lot of pages. It's gonna, my hope is that it's kind of a working document as we get more questions from community parents, anyone else that we can add to this. But the goal was to try to show our story. So I'm not going to go through and read this to you, but I will do kind of a quick summary, which is kind of how I summarize it on the second, third page. And if anybody's watching on YouTube, I think Chad, I think the plan is to eventually put this out in some form or fashion so that others can, can see this. But so if you kind of go back to 2013, 2013 through 2017, our cash balance of the general fund was growing year over year. On average, it rose $885,000 per year. 2016, in the middle of that, were the state teacher retirement system changes. Teachers now have to stay longer to get the same amount of pension. So how does that impact Ross? It, it means teachers are staying longer at higher salaries. That's probably good for our kids educationally, but financially, we're keeping those higher, those teachers on at higher salaries and not replacing them with lower, newer teachers as quickly. 2018, there was a increase in our state funding. We also received an increase from what we received in property taxes and the income tax. But there was also an increase in headcount and a 3% increase in the salary schedules. That led to salaries and wages increasing 10.4% that year. But despite that increase, we still had a surplus of $452,000. Go to 2019, and this is kind of where the start of our deterioration of our cash balance started. Total revenue was flat, but headcount increased again, and there was another 3% increase in salary schedules, plus you had the impact of what SDRS did with their changes. So, let's see, sorry, I lost my place. And then on top of all that, we had a shortage in our PI fund, Permanent Improvement Fund, and we had to pay, we took $1.6 million out of our general fund to cover the Chillers at the middle school and Elder. Between Permanent Improvement Fund and General Fund, Jenny, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but you can move money one way, but you can't move money back, back. So that's, that is a permanent, permanent move, and we didn't have the money there to pay for it. We had to take it out of the general fund, and we can reimburse ourselves, if you will, back out of the, out of the Permanent Improvement Fund.
Can I just make a comment? The reason why we had to do that is they weren't working. They were part of the OSC, High School Facilities Commission, replacement. They were both faulty from the beginning. They didn't work. We spent over eight years and a bunch of maintenance money trying to fix them. We decided that we needed to replace them because they were not really functioning, and we are still waiting on if a lawsuit with LG is going to move forward.
Thank you. That's good, good color, good color. Appreciate it. So, you know, as a result of both the revenue staying flat, increase in headcount, increase in salaries, and the Permanent Improvement Fund money move, the, the, the general fund decreased $3.3 million that year. Go fast forward again to 2020, and our headcount again increased, which drove salaries up another 5.6%. And in the end, we end up losing another $2.9 million out of our general fund decrease. So in that short span, we went from $10.8 million in our general fund at the end of fiscal year 2018 to $4.6 million at the end of 2020. Fast forward 2021, COVID hit. Also, I'm sorry, and also during fiscal year 2020, sorry, I kind of skipped over that important piece there. And that was COVID, right? In May of that year, so 11 months into our fiscal year, is when Dewine announced cuts because of lack of state revenue. We received 552-ish thousand, I can't, don't quote me on that, that might be, not be exact, but about $550,000 less than we were promised at the start of the year. So we're catching up 11 months into the year on that. And then going into 2021, he, he reduced our reduction. So we still did not get back to the whole amount that we were originally promised in 2020 and 2021, and they reduced it instead, just reduced it by 200,000. Then if you move forward, as the state was trying to figure out the new funding formula, as late as May, and it's one of the attachments to this document, was the Senate's proposal on the state funding formula. So this is May, as we're trying to move into the next year, so we're a month, month and a half away from starting the new year. All we're provided is the Senate's formula. The Senate projected a 600, 600, almost $700,000 increase in the, in the following year, and then another $486,000, $500,000-ish, $1,000, another increase in 2022. Instead, in early July of that year, so after the fiscal year had already started, the state instead passed the House's proposal as opposed to the Senate's proposal, which at the time, they could not provide us the formula, but only said, you will not receive less than you received last year. But keep in mind, the amount that we received last year was reduced from the previous couple of years. So in, in 2022, and what we're projecting for 2023 from the state, it is, with the exception of the, the COVID year in 2020, it is the lowest amount we've received from the state since 2013. So our, basically, our state funding has been flat for a decade. So as we, even if we keep costs and headcount the same, you know, we have addressed a lot of the headcount issues the last three years. Sorry, I'm kind of jumping all over the place. There's a lot on this page and a lot of story to tell. So if you go look at the FTE's employee headcount, about halfway down the bottom, you can see in 2016, we're at 303, 2017, 303, 2018, 322, 2019, 327, 2020, 342, and then 2021, back down to 306, 2022, 302. And the official headcount doesn't come out till October, the report that we received there, but we're expecting it to be less than 300. So we've, we've addressed the headcount issue over the last three years. We've, we're still looking at ways to save money, but in the end, without any increases in revenue, we're playing a losing game because all else equal, costs are going to go up because salaries go up. We can't just continue cutting, cutting, cutting because there's no revenue, there's no revenue to offset it. So the only way to do it is either increase revenue or cut, cut, cut. And we're, we're already pretty darn lean over the, with the cuts we've made over the last three years, changes we've made. I say cuts, that's cuts through, actual cuts. It's also cuts through attrition, not replacing positions, shifting responsibilities. So that's kind of my purview where we're at. I very quickly went over a lot of numbers and a lot of information. Kind of leave it to the board for.
Yeah, so thanks for putting this together. I know this has been a working document for a while. Couple of things. When they, when the state changed retirement, and Jenny and Keith can remember talking about this, your salaries and benefits and weight, everything, the salaries and benefits was about 70% back in the day, right? And that was a good number to stay by with the old retirement system.
Are you saying?
Totally, yeah. The salaries and benefits.
Being the total of your expenditures.
Yeah, the expenditures was around 70 back in the day.
That would be a great.
Yeah. And then when it changed that system, it just went up drastically.
Yeah, because they incrementally increased the percentage that the district, the board has to contribute on behalf of the employees by 4%.
Yeah.
And there's also legislation that looks at, maybe they might want to start increasing that again, but that's just being talked about. But yes, it did increase districts' costs substantially, 4% over.
So that was something that was voted on by the state.
It was a state law.
That we had to address, which is really hard in our, in our district. The LG lawsuit, Mr. Kleinfelter talked about, the 1.6 transfer. The headcount is interesting because, I mean, that's the first thing that, when you want to play armchair quarterback like I was with this thing, is like, why is the headcount high? And then you start digging into that, and there's, you know, special ad written reasons. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, it is a number of things. There will be a lot of extrapolating out.
Yeah.
Positions and things that went into that. But we, we talked about that during the, during the focus groups and things that we did about the amount of special education students that have come into the district, and not only the number, but the needs of the students that we have. So we have increased special education services dramatically in the last four or five years.
Right. And then I was.
The other thing with just the headcount, too, I just want to add to, digging into how they counted this.
Yeah.
I would look at this more as if from a trend perspective than a hard number because, and it's consistent throughout, so that's why I'd say you can look at it from a trend. But like, the year Dr. Conkle was hired, hired, and there was maybe what, a week or two week overlap, overlap with Mr. Gates, well, in that number, it's counting two superintendents.
Two superintendents, yeah.
Just, so.
So if I was the public, like, that's one of the questions I would, I would refer to Dr. Conkle and say, hey, in an email, or can I stop by? Because that's real important, you know, because it's, it's the way it fluctuates. The other thing I would say about the headcount number, although we've been in cut mode since you've been hired, Dr. Conkle, it seems like, it, it's getting, it's, it's getting to a tipping point. It's getting to a point where it's, it, I, I'll use my kid as an example, and I never yet liked to talk about my kids at a school board meeting, but Mia Van Winkle, when she was in second grade, had like 19, 20 kids in second grade. Fast forward just a couple of years, Charlie's in that class, just shy of 30 with one teacher. And that is, that is a lot to ask. Now, our teachers are great, and I'm not going to say the teacher Charlie has, but she's incredible, but it is a lot to be asking. We took jobs like when the bus coordinator position, transportation director left, Dr. Conkle took the maintenance supervisor and said, hey, you're now in charge of maintenance and busing. It looks great on paper, we're saving money, but it is getting to a point where, and I'm not saying it's not safe, it's just we're at a crossroads where we are asking people to do a lot, and it's tough. It's really tough. The last thing I want to say is, because there's a lot of times people say that boards are recklessly spending, or administration is, the discretionary spending that a school board deals with is not, a lot of it's contracted through teacher negotiations, gas is what it is, electricity is what it is. So my point is discretionary spending is not that high. And if you look at the, and Chair, please don't get mad at me, but if you look at the teacher raises over the last 10 years, which the board have, they have to prove, it's, it's, it's well, well, well below average. It's almost criminal, to be honest with you. So if we were giving out high raises and going above market value and doing this and that, then I would say that this board, and even myself guilty is charged, but we're not doing that. We've asked them to take the bullet, quite frankly, for more than 10 years. So it's a revenue problem. And I don't know how else to say it, like, this, this data is facts. It's a revenue problem that we're in. So sorry to go on a soapbox there, but it, it's just frustrating because it's no one's fault. A lot, like, the teacher, when they change, when teachers retire, that's not our fault. I mean, they threw that at us, and we're stuck with it. Because I guarantee you, those teachers that are in that situation, they would leave tomorrow to retire. And every time we hire somebody, you guys have done a great job, when you can, to bring in, you know, first or second year people, which is great, but you got to understand, we're losing a 20-year vet, a 30-year vet, and hiring a first-year teacher. So I know our state report cards are great, and we continue to bust our butt, but there's a lot of stuff at stake here, so. Mr. Kleinfelter decided to go off like that. Go to you now. Do you have any questions on some of the stuff Andy's covered so far?
No. Steven Molt, no.
Through finance, man. Mrs. Webb?
Nope.
Anything else you want to talk about on that? I mean, there's an article at the end, too.
Yeah, I've just, I've added some stuff that, just to kind of support some of the comments I've made in there. You know, the spreadsheet we received from the state in May of 2021 showing the proposed increases for us, the spreadsheet we received from the state in regards to the cuts that we have, an article about that. The only other comment I would make is in regards to some of the state funding, and even when Dr. Conkle and I talked to the state oversight committee, who's, he's going to talk about next, but they made a comment around, along the lines of the state funding now seems to, is moving towards demographics and need-based as opposed to, you know, a fair allocation of, you know, peanut butter funds going across, peanut butter spread funds across everybody, so everybody's getting equal amounts. They are focusing on, you can see in the cuts in that spreadsheet that I have in there with the cuts that were made, the districts that, and the percentage of their funds that were cut compared to what we were cut. You can see it in the new funding formula, how we're, we're staying flat and the increases that other districts that are, so we've said it before, that we are thought of as a richer district, and I think, I think this state funding formula is, is proving that, and the cuts and everything else is just backing that up.
And again, Dr. Conkle said, actually, this would probably be for Jenny. So if people have questions regarding this 10-year snapshot, you're going to have a ton, I have a ton, please direct them directly to Jenny Logan and Steve Castater. They will be more than happy to talk through this massive information, over the phone, you know, email, whatever it may be, so. Sound okay with that?
That is perfectly fine. And as we move forward, you know, I'm, I'm new, and I'm learning your story as well. And so there might, as I'm looking through these documents, there are questions I have that maybe some of the community members might have as well. So I might, while I'm looking through, be able to answer questions just because I'm looking at some of this stuff for the first time as well. But we are also going to be looking at a five-year, five-year forecast. We're, we're already starting to look at, you know, what's that November forecast going to look like that we'll be bringing forward for you to look at. So, yeah, as we dig in, we're happy to answer any questions and work towards getting answers that anybody might have.
So, Mr. Van Winkle, we will get this on the, hopefully, website, Facebook page if possible. It's a large document, but I think we need to get it out to our community. And then every week, starting next Friday, we'll get some FAQs out around this information.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
I, I said, and I'll, I'll stop after this, but August, I was cautiously optimistic about the levy, but I think the main thing, because there were so many things that I, I personally think was misinformation, but the main thing is you got to know how we got here before you can wrap your head around wanting to pay taxes. I hate taxes. I own a bunch of properties, more than anything, but I love this school. And I think the main thing is how we got here, you got to know how we got here. Okay? This is the facts on how we got here. If you have questions, please, please reach out. Please reach out.
Okay, next, we're going to lead into, there is a PR statement we're going to get released tonight. That's about the Burns property and also the intermediate building, and Mr. Kleinfelter is going to address that for us.
All right, really, it's about three things. It's titled Burns Farm Development. We've been kind of caught up in a little bit of confusion and controversy about that. It's also about Elder Elementary, the land swap, and also a little bit of information about RIS. So I'm just going to read it without editorializing. And basically, it says, "The Ross Public School District Board of Education would like to clear up some confusion about our involvement in the Burns family property and what has been claimed by..." in the Burns family property and what has been claimed by many on social media and the rumor mill. Board of Education is only in support of the development of that property for the full and complete school taxes to be collected at the time of the development. The Board of Education has been asked to be included in any discussions that take place between township trustees, county officials, or provincial, potential developers of this property in order to protect our interest from a tax revenue and be able to handle any plan for potential influx of new students into the district. We are not for or against development of any properties in the district as a governing body. The Board of Education believes that any landowner who follows proper zoning, development laws, and has the resources should be allowed to develop their property as they choose to within the constraints of the law. Ross Township is only about 20 to 25% developed. Regarding any future development, the Board of Education wants to be proactive and not reactive." Also, in a public statement about that property, during that meet, during a public meeting, a consultant for the township mentioned that a developer was interested in acquiring Elda Elementary in a land exchange. This has never been discussed by the Board of Education. The Board of Education would not be interested in a land exchange for one of our buildings. There's been a lot of speculation by the community about this, and it's simply not been discussed. Have we heard the rumors? Yes. Now, if someone wants to build us a brand-new elementary school capable of holding 950 students in exchange for the property at Elda, we would be happy to discuss that option. In reality, we don't see any developer having those kinds of financial resources, so the rumor is just that. The rumor mill has also linked the opening of the Ross Intermediate School with the Burns Farm Development. We have been very clear upon three compelling reasons for the opening of this building. We took our fourth and, fourth grade out of the current elementary buildings, and the fifth grade out of the middle school, adding space for all-day kindergarten program. We now have open space in our elementary buildings to accommodate the growth to fourth graders being housed at RIS. RIS also has allowed more space in our current middle school, which was overcrowded. The Ross School District Administration made this decision because we felt it was best for the children academically, socially, and emotionally. The fourth and fifth grade model is also good for our children. The overwhelming majority of feedback we've received from the families in the RIS building has been extremely positive. They feel their children are benefiting academically and socially from the new environment. We hope this statement will clarify any misconceptions."
Mr. Schnell, do you have anything with that?
No.
Mrs. Hayes, welcome. I know you had to step to work. Thanks for, and Mr. Kleinfelder kind of put that together, and then the board looked at it. You know, I was telling Dr. Conkle today that social media is, is really, really tough right now, and I love it and then I hate it, but, you know, sometimes it can divide a community, it can divide some of the people, and it's really tough. I respect everything everybody says, but it's tough, and when you're in a community like Ross, everything is out there, you know? We're doing our best, I know Dr. Conkle is, and the board will continue to bring in people who might be naysayers or whatever it may be, and just try to answer questions, try to find common ground, try to work with each other, because ultimately, everybody does care about this place, so. It was very important, and we kind of said that about the Burns Farm, because that's a hot topic. I grew up here, and I get everything everybody's saying, so it was important, I felt that we, you know, needed to put that out there. So thanks for doing that, Mr. Kleinfelder. Next, Dave?
All right, next is the state oversight conversation, I think Mr. Castager, Mrs. Logan, you guys want the clicker announced?
Does everyone, that's starting right here?
Yes.
Okay, so August 29th, I think that's when we had the Zoom with the Ohio Department of Education to talk over steps, triggers, designations, just to kind of, even though you all went through this process last year, to just kind of familiarize ourselves with it and to also look at, okay, the levy failed in August, what are we looking at here? What are those steps? And what is the duration and the trigger? So, and again, this is intended to be a high-level discussion. If you go to ODE's website and you look for these designations and triggers, there's lots of information. The information that we're sharing and going over tonight is really just generally speaking, how do you become a precautionary district? So the way that you become a precautionary district, and again, I mentioned, November is when the next forecast is going to be looked at. So upon submissions for the November forecast, we're now going to be looking at fiscal years '23 through '26, and if a deficit, a cash deficit is predicted in the first three years, then the state will identify you and designate you as a precautionary district, meaning they don't want you to get into fiscal caution, so they're going to work with you to talk about what is that plan. Then the next designation would be caution, and a caution, a district gets into caution if their deficit occurs in the first two years, which would be this year or next year of that forecast. Also, a cautionary district is if their prior year general fund revenues, if that deficit they're predicting is more than 2%, but less than 8% of the prior year's general fund revenue, and then it just gets worse from there. If, if you're a district in fiscal watch, that means that you are looking at a current year cash deficit, and it's more than 8%, but less than the 15% of your prior year's general fund revenue. And there also, these steps are, you have to develop a plan. You have to tell the state of Ohio, how are you going to get yourself out of this? Which we've already talked about, more revenue or less expenses or a new levy. So that plan, I know you all already filed one last year, through the precautionary steps, we would have to look at that again. But this next step, I want to also say, fiscal emergency, districts who get into fiscal emergency, which is you're looking at a current year cash deficit, you're not going to have enough cash to run the year, and it's more than 15% of your prior year revenues, and where you're unable to do what you say you're going to do with that plan. The emergency piece is where districts try never to get into fiscal emergency because it's very difficult to get out of that designation. We hear this a lot, not just here, but everywhere, it's like, okay, when is the state going to come over, at what designation and at what step does the state come in, they throw all of us out, and then they take over the district? That's not what this is about. It's state oversight, they want you to develop the plan. If you get into that emergency situation, they do appoint a financial planning and supervision commission that does have powers and works with the district, but everyone's not removed. It's still the district, it's still the board, the administration's responsibility to come up with the plan and figure it out. And this last bullet, to exit fiscal emergency, you have to show in your five-year forecast that there are no deficits throughout that forecast. The average duration that a district is in fiscal emergency is four years. That means that this, this financial planning and supervision commission is around for a four-year period of time. So it's not somewhere that you would ever want to get into. Where are we now? I already mentioned, we believe in November. Based on what we're looking at, we're going to be back in that precautionary state, which means in 2025, we are predicting that we would run out of cash. We would not have enough cash. So what, what are we required to do during that period of time during the precautionary state? We have to submit a written plan, which we would have to work on again, but that's where we are again. We're staying high level, not digging into all the little details. Any questions, and what did I miss?
I think, just to clarify, we were, forecasts are submitted twice a year, November and May. We were in fiscal precaution with the November forecast. The reason we were able to come out of it for May was because of the cuts that we made moving into this school year. So we were able to reduce our expenditures by $700,000 from area league personnel, and that got us out of fiscal precaution for the May forecast, but again, as we go into the November planning cycle, we're anticipating that we'll be right back in the same state again.
I guess the only, the only thing I'd, only thing I'd add would be that what we've learned is that if you get to the point of a negative cash balance, to where you aren't paying money, the state advances you money out of the state funding, but that is in advance, it is not, it's not a gift, it doesn't make it go away, it just takes it out of the money that you're supposed to receive the following year. So you're getting this, you're getting this pattern of just continuing to borrow from the state until you can pass the levy to offset that, and that's...
It's kind of like a payday loan, almost, like you get it in advance on your check, and then they just take it out at the next one.
And that's why you see the districts that get in the situation, they go ask for a certain amount of millage, get, that gets voted down, next time they've got to ask for more because they start going into this hole of debt that they've got to pay the state back with, so. It's the only other thing I'd add.
Let me make just one comment. I think people believe that the state comes in, they have a magic wand to fix this problem. That is not accurate. The state's going to come in, hopefully never, but if they do, they're going to make cuts, and they're going to do a massive levy on ballot. So I think people believe that they have a magic solution, they're, they're doing what we're doing now, trying to develop a plan to get through this. So I just want people to know that, again, if they do come in, it's not, they don't have a magic solution.
There's a lot of schools that are kind of throughout the state in this sort of situation. Don't worry. Okay, with that being said, I, let's, let's, we've got, we've got plenty of time, so we can open it up. If people have questions, feel free to ask them. Mr. Richards has the mic right there. It's a lot of information, obviously, that we supply tonight.
Thank you so much. Check. Oh, that's really loud. Hi, thank you so much for all this information, first of all, just as a community member and parent of kids at Elda, you know, they've got a long way to go through Ross, which we're really excited about and want to be here for, for all of it. My question, I guess it's for Jenny, it's nice to meet you, hi. The deficit predicted in third year, 2025 of the forecast, do you foresee that changing with the November forecast? Because this one's based on May.
So I believe, based on, again, it's preliminary, we've just started working on the November forecast, but there is not any financial good news that I've seen that is going to change that bottom line. So I believe that 2025, we're still going to be looking at a cash deficit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a short break. Who has a question? Nobody?
We didn't pass the levy, but we have collected some money in the athletic department. Where does that money show up right now? What I understand is if we pass the levy in November, we're giving that money back to the, to the athletes. So if we don't pass it, we collect again. At what point do you quit giving the money back that we collect so that it can be used? Because I guess right now you just have it in limbo somewhere.
It's actually, it's going into the general fund. I mean, the whole, the whole purpose behind increasing the participation fees was to offset the general fund cost that has traditionally supported the athletic program, so supplemental salaries, transportation, those costs have traditionally been funded by the general fund. We increased the fees so the fees would cover those costs and not continue to further drain the general fund with athletic expenditures.
But how would you send that money back to everybody then?
So Penny, if you look, if you're looking at this guy, Jenny or Steve, correct, I'm wrong, but there's an all of the, all of the operating line, so that money is in there. If we do pass the levy, then our projected...
Property tax.
Property tax will increase, but we will decrease that line. We'll take that money back out. So we, we will refund the fall, if we pass in November, we will refund the fall. That's all we've, all we've promised to this point, is that if we pass in November, we would refund the fall fees paid.
Refund it. We can go back to the original one.
The difference between the increased fee and the original fee.
Any other questions?
I'll ask one more. I don't see anything on the agenda that you're going to be discussing the school levy after 7 o'clock, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. The question I have...
Just, just, hold on Penny.
Is it us or is it this stuff here? School levy, it's not...
We're not talking about that right now.
Okay. Are we going to talk about it tonight?
Uh, no, we're not.
Okay.
Right now, the conversation's geared around all this, open conversation about this right now.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll break until 7:00. Do we need to go roll call for this?
You, you can put us in recess and then take us back out.
Okay, we're going recess until 7:00 PM. Thank you.